The last eighteen months.
Yeah, the calls.
Varies.
Yes.
Calls. Lot of different. Adjectives.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
How we messing then?
Donnie Bryant.
Thank you, my dear.
Actually, I had a nice PowerPoint or still have a nice PowerPoint. I didn't want everybody to break their neck and have to look over their shoulder.
Why am I gonna call me daughter?
Got me.
We got one another.
Let me call Donnie real quick. Just letting you know.
Mario's gonna get in there and have a call. I guess we have got a call though.
Hmm?
Three of us, I guess we got a call.
Yeah.
Oh, did you?
No, we got a five o'clock work session with the fire department. Alright, buddy. See ya.
Johnny?
Said, well, it's at six o'clock. Nope, it's not.
What's Mario out?
Out, I don't know.
He's, he's, he's using every, that clock's fast, so he's gonna use every minute he can.
Well, it's now, according to my watch, it's now five o'clock.
I got, I got four fifty-nine.
Okay.
For his defense, but not the...
We could go, we could go by yours, I don't care.
I'm just trying to make sure we do this legally.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done so much illegal.
Mm-hmm. She's supposed to be here, she knows about it. I sent her the, I sent her a fax a couple, I don't know, last week, one day, whenever I posted it. Yeah, here she comes.
Mario Watcher?
He was.
Was Mario Watcher?
Yes, he was.
He needs to be in here.
I'll go shake him down.
He's probably coming, he just looked at me.
Who's?
Hands for you.
There he is, hi.
Here you go.
Okay.
Are they here for this one?
Everybody ready?
Are they here for yours?
This is a work-
Barb?
It's a work session.
I know, that's a work session, yeah. You wanna sit in on the work session? Our meetings are not till six.
I have to, we have to meet with fire force, is that...
Well, oh, that's, that's at six.
That's gonna be at six too?
Yeah. I mean, that's okay.
Down, I ask you want to? Call us meeting order, roll call please.
Uh, member Donnie Bryant is absent, member Bill Brunner.
Present.
Member Aaron Cook.
Here.
Member Mario Todd.
Here.
Uh, Leslie Votah.
Here.
Um, mayor.
Here.
And myself.
Johnny? You're on.
Need to introduce myself?
Yeah, go ahead, just...
Fire chief Johnny Truitt. Uh, I'm glad we finally got, get this together, I know we've been dragging this out a little while. What was, what we're wanting to do is, uh, is, there's three things on the agenda, on the agenda, and I'd give you, everybody a copyback and you, uh, what are the tips? The first thing I'm gonna cover tonight is the vacant full-time firefighter position we have on our twenty-four hour work schedule. Since I, uh, last year when the mayor car asked me to take the fire chief's position, work forty hour work, we said, I relieved a position off of unit day, which we have, at that time, we had, before I became fire chief, we had six firefighters who worked three units a day. And then we would compensate the other two with part-time, which we ended up, we maintained four firefighters on, on fire truck. It was the no shipment minimum to start an interior fire. That's the whole thought process behind why we have four on it. So, uh, when I became, uh, fire chief, that relieved one of the positions, and we had to fill that position with part-time for the past year. You'll see in your handouts that I took, that, uh, healthcare reforms mentioned in there, and that's when we started really getting a pinch on, uh, on this, is when they started talking about the healthcare reform. I had heard from the east of us that that was direct, was gonna directly affect, uh, fire departments and stuff. Till I learned a little more about it, then I learned, yes, it was, because in the healthcare reform bill, it states that a full-time firefighter is anybody that works thirty hours, uh, more. And, uh, so, thirty hours or more, well, our part-time was getting thirty-six and, you know, eight hours. But we had to draw back, we had to, uh, uh, put a line in the sand and said, okay, nobody works over twenty-four hours in a week, not to exceed twenty-nine hours, and, and that thirty hours is an average of thirty hours. So, that in turn, with what we got working part-time, kinda put us a damper where we're only running, a lot of times, three guys on, on a shift, and it kind of limits us when we get out, and one less man hard is a lot in the bars. Actually, Rob's, Rob's took the blood of that. Uh, but that's, uh, that, that's item number one of why we're here, is that we can fill, uh, firefighter EMTs. Get the information, I don't have the details, it's a discussion.
Is there any money in there, budgeted anywhere?
Uh, what I did, when I, when Jackie gave us the budgetary items, uh, if you didn't catch me, I incorporated six full-time firefighters plus the salary of the fire chief.
I noticed that.
For next year.
I noticed that. Uh-huh.
Because, uh, this, this year's budget, uh, my salary is still coming out, and the, uh, the ten thousand dollar stipend's still there, so it would have to be...
Is this where I tell you I took one of those positions out?
Oh, I'm...
No, I didn't. I'm kidding, they're there.
But, yeah, we, we had a little forethought there, and, uh...
But you weren't planning on doing this till next year?
Right. I think we can survive another...
Oh, part-time?
This eliminates them at overtime too, wouldn't it?
Yeah, actually, we'll have to double time, yeah, but we could some be...
That's, we got guys, we got, you got a guy pulling down ninety thousand dollars here.
We, um, I believe...
Close to it, don't you?
Nah, I think they're by, what, what was the highest we had, seventy-four?
Well, I thought it was you guy, it might have been police.
So, just a question for, well, and for you, for Jenny, as far, did, did anybody even check to see whether not firemen are included in the healthcare reform?
Yes, it's all employees, it is all employees.
It is all employees, it doesn't have anything to do with whether or not they're fire, because sometimes the fire and the police have special rules, so that's why I'll make sure.
Yeah, yeah, it is all, it will be checked into it.
Okay.
And then, and then this portion of the healthcare reform, just for national purposes, has actually been delayed till two thousand and fifteen, um, as is, as did all the employer responsibilities. The law as it is, employers are having a harder time understanding it, and I think the government's having a harder time explaining it, um, so it is all being, um, put back till two thousand and fifteen, but it's good that you guys are being proactive in it. Just because we were, we're, we're gonna have to look at two thousand and fourteen on the whole, and we're looking at the hours come two thousand and fifteen.
So, two thousand and fifteen is actually when it's, it's supposed to be implemented?
Yes.
Under the revised.
Under the revised.
Yeah.
Hello?
Fourteen when initially.
By that time, we have Hillary in, it'll be changed.
Wow. I mean, there's other businesses now that are cutting the hours, just like you are, that I've heard of, and, and if they didn't, I mean, if they don't have to do it right away, I mean, why are they, you know, that's, anyway.
I think it's kinda because they've already delivered the message to their employees, and they said, okay, this is what we're doing, and I think taking it back, and then having them do it again in four months, is kind of, I don't know, but...
Well, in the private sector, sooner's better than later, though.
Yeah, sooner's better than later, and, and really, it kinda gives the employers a little bit of a wiggle room right now, until two thousand and fourteen does come along, because two thousand and fourteen's when you're gonna have to, have to actually start counting those hours, to look back, once two thousand and fifteen comes in. Now, whether or not they change the law between now and then, I don't know, but it's best for us to prepare as it is.
This changed some of your rotation too, won't you? Your hours and stuff, rotation, shifts?
Well, it, I think with the hours that we're given at the part-time, I mean, we can testify.
Right. That's where the money's gonna come from, yeah.
And you, you know, uh, even, uh, I mean, they could come back and repeal, or, you know, the whole healthcare reform, but still, I, I think, anyway, even if we didn't have it.
But then you just wouldn't be limited as far as your...
Right.
This help out holidays, vacations, stuff like this too?
I mean, actually, you know, for being one short, there's a lot of guys that get hammered on some overtime, and we've had to do some mandatory overtime too. Love the little guy, total. But no, I, I mean, any, by any other questions on that issue?
I got a question. I know, and I don't know departments where, whatever, but I hear a lot of, of fire departments that are, you know, obviously EMT, but also like paramedic, and, you know, a step above EMTs and all that, are you guys looking to do that in the future, or...
I know I've had this discussion with the mayor before about, you know, possibly in the future, start hiring, hiring the firefighter paramedics. I know he had also, um, told me he'd like to see us all become paramedics, and, and the problem with that is, we can only allow one to go at a time, because you're looking at the hours involved in school, and we can't shut down fire departments, we need to do the paramedic training. Um, I think the future, uh, actually, that, that is the future, is to be firefighter matic, I mean, get more badge for your buck, I mean, just like firefighter EMTs. We could be just firefighters, not EMTs over there, but you're actually getting more badge for your buck, and plus, we're hot, having inspections these days.
This can work.
So, when I'm on a truck and, or I'm crewing an EMT, I go with one. All, and there's no officer also involved, or a full-time guy that can appeal the question, have the public, or, things that truck hang on with that service, or firefighter.
Because we got it certified, the LS non-train, order for that thing operated has to happen.
Right.
And that was another...
And if you have a call where it's gonna take three EMTs, you might have Lawrenceburg, Greendale, Roar, or, you know, you might need someone else, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you're not off truck.
Right.
You have somebody else.
Exactly.
Well, this works in line, I've talked to Bobby, the EMS director, and when I came in, I wanted to do EMT, or a paramedic anyway. He's gonna send, he's gonna have a, a meeting with us, just like Johnny's having, he's got money where to send his people to be paramedics, they had three hundred and fifty hours more, I think, to be paramedics. Well, that's gonna help a lot, they can administer medicine, they can put trakes in, everything else. And I told Johnny, I said, if you hire somebody, make sure they're firefighter, paramedic, that way we're ahead of the game, we don't have to send them to school. Well, we have, we will have to train these, but, and eventually, the EMS and fire will come together, because you see this nowhere, where you got separate EMS and fire, they're all together, paid, anyway. And that's...
It's all about these ones.
Right. And we can operate a hell of a lot cheaper.
Had to beg them to come to this house, so. So, we had to beg them to come to this house, if you remember.
Right. Well, they understand, I, I explained it to both groups, they said, we gotta come together.
Although I agree with you, it's just thinking, you know, that's the future.
Right, it is, and the size town we got, and the runs, they do seventeen hundred runs a year, they, we need paramedics, because our people are getting older, and they can administer med, if, if we would save one person's life with a paramedic, that's paid for the whole system.
You know, with the heroin, I, I mean, these guys and myself, you see, with the heroin overdoses, I mean... You know, it's a lost cause, it could be, but you can see the healthfulness of it, and administering the hard drugs, big people.
Last few years, EMS and fire has, keep, their games came way up, really have the training, they go through, they do a hell of a good job, real good job.
So, that's your first request, is just to fill the firefighter EMT position for two thousand and fourteen, which is part-time? So, I mean, you want us to go ahead and vote on that, or you wanna go on the second one, and...
Well, I, I mean, however you wanna handle it.
Isn't that something?
We, we take the vote, you want?
Real quick, so, so then, uh, the new position is not gonna be, uh, medic, or whatever, is that what you call it?
That's what you all have to tell me. I know in the past, medic is a little more in-depth, is, uh... With us, we wasn't EMTs, but we had to get the certification. I don't know if you wanna handle our firefighter EMT, and, okay, you gotta, within agreement, get your paramedic certification.
That's three hundred and fifty more hours they gotta go.
Or do you want it to be twelve hundred and fifty, on top of EMT for one year, then twelve hundred and fifty hours?
On top of EMT, yes.
Or do we just wanna go ahead and put it out as a firefighter paramedic?
It's only, it would be the smart thing to do.
Yeah, it's already there.
Right.
I mean, you're gonna be able to fi, I mean, I know it's just ten bucks an hour, right? Is it just ten bucks an hour on part-time?
Right now, in the, right now, ten bucks an hour?
But I mean, in the paramedic, with the paramedic training, that, there's not a raise to that, or...
No.
We're looking for a full-time.
It's gonna be full-time, Leslie.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
It'd be basically, they, they would make what we make, or what they...
Right now, they're filling that spot with, with...
I'm sorry, I thought it was part-time that you were looking for, you're looking for another full-time.
Some of your guys is gonna take the crossover, aren't they?
Um, I think, I don't know, Ryan's?
Ryan's, he's pretty good.
Yeah, Ryan's, Ryan's probably...
Patrick, you think about taking it?
He's an intermediate.
You, you think about taking the paramedic?
If I?
Yeah.
I'm still basic like these guys, I would have to go through the whole class.
What, oh, this is like a question about the future, but what happens, like, if the next administration goes back to the stipend chief, what happens to the se, the seventh guy?
Oh.
Because then you have seven full-time firefighters.
That should probably be put...
Well, um, with the way everything, uh, Indian code is written, the fire chief has to come out of the banks of the fire department.
And then you'd go back to six, then you'd go back to the sixth firefighter, right?
Right, if they was, if, if the next administration elected not to have a full-time chief, then I would revert back to the rotation.
Anyways.
The most ideal thing would, for them to do, would be to take one of the, right, right now, one of the, uh, full-time guys that's permanent chief, then I'd just revert back.
Yeah, that's, that's what, I mean, I've talked to you about that in the past, but what about if the new administration, um, went back to the stipend, and you go back to the sixth firefighter, what happens to the seventh guy, um, you just hired?
Uh, it would be up to, to the council to appropriate the money, or like...
Well, the other thing is...
For the EMS, once somebody retires there, because they would be, they would also, they would be hired.
So, would they put that as a bid, you think, then, and he could sign for that bid, and say, how would that work?
Fire chief, that's the point of the mayor.
No, I'm talking about, not the fire chief.
The firefighter, yes, that could go out as a signed bid.
Well, what I remember from all that stipend, the, the stuff about the stipend, that it wasn't...
I think what you're saying...
So, I don't know that they could go back to the stipend, because we left it, we were gonna leave it in place, because it was there, you know what I mean? But from talking with them, Ball, and Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I think, I think they were talking, when they said the stipend thing, that was just, that was basically a, um, a scheme of the past.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
But that's still gonna answer his question, though, if he did away with full-time chief.
And just made him a part-time chief.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we went back and say they...
I'm just worried about the seventh guy is what I'm worried about, that they go back... He would go back in rotation, actually.
Volunteer out to be fire chief, then, yeah, that was, it would be up to the board.
The stipend would have any merit to that, I mean, the mechanics would still be, he would go back into the...
That's kinda smarter the way they're doing it.
Then that seventh person would be up to whoever, to either be laid off until appropriations for full-time would be made.
Or move over to EMS.
Or move over, yeah.
If you wanted to be paramedic, just result in there, and get across the train.
He'd be first in line for that, if it was a bid position too, for the EMS.
I'd, I'd hope we wouldn't get some person that would do something like that, because that would be putting everything behind.
Oh, I was worried. I think that...
I understand your question, that's a good question.
Yeah, I was worried about the guy coming in here, and he's here for two years, and all of a sudden, if, if somebody else comes, and the next administration comes in and goes back, and then this guy's, yes, he left another job, or whatever.
Moved here, or whatever it took, yeah.
I mean, ideally, if he take it out on a full-time, it would, it would flood, but, yeah, if he did that.
Actually, you'd be bumping for what you'd be doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's the little man over? Full-time?
The new, the new guy.
The new guy. Same guy.
Little man.
Little man, terrible.
Well, actually, it'd be whoever he...
It'd be whoever the higher person.
Yeah, whoever they hire, the new person. Yeah.
Well, it could go by training too. You can keep the most trained person too.
I mean, what do you think as far as being able to hire someone, um, I mean, is it gonna be hard to hire someone that's just a firefighter, or with paramedic training?
They're out there.
Oh, they're out there.
Oh, yeah.
The biggest thing we would run into is the, in order to be a firefighter in the state of Indian Ten, and you have to live in the state, or the county adjoining Deerland County, so it'd be a lot, rip on the Franco county. In which their firefighter paramedics are out there, but they're not as abundant as the guys of...
Right, right, that's what I was saying.
Hamilton County abuts up to us.
Yeah, I was gonna finish saying, I've had this argument...
No, I'm just...
Well, I think, I mean, I think going, you know, maybe starting, maybe the first one you hire, as the, what do you, you call them, medics or paramedics?
Paramedics.
Paramedic firefighter.
Yeah, because if nobody responds to that, then, uh, if they don't need it till next year, we got a little bit of time, right?
They could always go down or lower your hours.
No, they're gonna ride on, on the truck, right, they're not gonna need a special vehicle, their own, or anything like that, they're gonna...
I mean, the biggest thing we got with the paramedic issue is his abilities versus ours, but, you know, it's too different.
Then when you combine them, the life squad will go out with the fire truck, they'll all be together, that's the whole idea of this whole thing.
But, yeah, but putting, I mean, even, you know, I, I completely understand what you're saying, but the, the knowledge that you guys will get from him, I mean, as far as your training, you know, saying, show me how to do that, you know, watching, I mean, you guys are gonna get...
Sure.
Like his training too, these guys, so, he has to do, and we can do the basics, what, a little, just like the EMS we have now, can we take care of easier, and they can be on a higher advanced skill, they can work at hand.
Well, do you, you think they're gonna do some hard feelings from our EMS that, uh...
No, they know it's coming, I've talked to them.
But, I mean, maybe would like to get this training and have a shot at this.
Right.
See, um, I mean, there's always riffing, uh...
Yeah, there is.
You know, I mean, we just try to do our best to, uh, get through everything. The prob, the problem with the mayor, and I'm, I'm, he can bring us up, because it's popular, the problem with the medic right now is, I don't think he's...
Right, and also, on the same hand, that we're gonna have problems with, is we put medic drugs on our fire truck, probably gonna have to be a paramedic to be on that truck. So, that could put us in a position to work...
If he was already called out?
It does, it would matter, it would matter, because if we put a paramedic on the truck, and he takes, one, he's on, on schedule on Monday, well, Tuesday comes, there's not a paramedic to put on the truck, because the truck's still gonna be certified when it comes up. Like, like what requirements, now the requirement's to have an EMT on that truck, on the door, so if we put paramedic drugs on it, is it gonna be required to be a paramedic to come out the door, have those, the drugs on that truck?
Well, that's...
That's how it'd work out, yeah.
That's something else.
Or could it just be concealed, where you couldn't get to it, if that paramedic's not on board?
It's gotta be certified, there probably has to be a certification that goes with the, kinda like Bobby's squad is certified, and...
Right.
But it can also drop to a basic.
On a second call. On a second call.
What else can help out too?
I mean, there's nothing they can do, or it's like, I know, you guys are in a big hurry.
Eventually, you're gonna upgrade, be there, we're gonna have multiples, you know, but it's just not gonna be, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the biggest thing, I think, we really be concerned with, is he, we have now, we have a paramedic that runs with us now, but he drops to a basic certi, if you're a paramedic, you can do all of this below, and that's basically what he's doing, so, as long as he can get his, keep his skills up, you know, however, you can, you know, they can still run as a, as a basic until we get eventually down the road where we have more...
Multiple. Mm-hmm.
Well, they go out on a run, say they get to a fire, there's three people trapped, this paramedic can, they don't have anybody to work on, he can go in that fire, till they get somebody back out, if you're short on people, because I don't know how many people's gonna have, say they got a Kefouli Golf House, they're gonna need ten, fifteen guys for that fire, if they only got four of them there, that guy can help out till the other people come. It's, it works a good, really good way, it really does.
But in the same token, what he's saying is, a truck might be prohibited from going out, or be, you know, I mean...
We can have a medic, we can have a guy who's trained in paramedic level, and not be able to provide the equipment on the truck.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. So, I'm saying, that, I mean, so, I think it kinda works both ways, as far as that goes.
But when you, when you come together, the life squad's gonna be going with that fire truck, so it'll be there.
Yeah, yeah, they still, maybe still do...
That's where you take care of that, right there.
Yeah. I mean, it's...
But maybe I'm confused, maybe I'm confused in a one, though, if that truck's certified, say you do have a paramedic on staff, he works Tuesday, but he's off on Wednesday, can, and that truck's certified, can it be called out on that Wednesday?
Now, it can.
No, I'm talking about if...
It's only certified at a basic level.
No, I'm talking about if it's certified at paramedic level.
I don't know what the criteria are for paramedic drugs.
I see.
If you get enough of them trained, you're gonna have enough per shift.
Yeah, eventually, it's gonna take time to do that.
But you, January first, and then, if I'm out of line, correct me if I'm wrong, January first, if you hired a firefighter, paramedic, and put him on that fire truck, he wouldn't be able to do anything more than rob and...
Correct.
That's all the equipment we're allowed to carry on the truck.
Correct, understand.
Be a basic EMT, even though he can perform higher skills, we can't provide without that truck, certified truck.
The resources for, right.
We can't provide the equipment on the truck.
But there'd be the EMT taking that squad to that scene, and he come off that truck, get on...
Not if, if it's a second run, we are the only truck that goes until transport here comes.
Well, that's true.
What's a certified? That truck, what, what's on that?
That cert, the truck we have is certified, our, uh, new truck is certified, basic life support, non-transport, but it isn't certified, has all the medical equipment that they carry on an ambulance, the only difference is, is we can't...
And, and the drugs. It's a basic.
We have our basic, we have basic drugs that we can administer, baby aspirin, activated charcoal, uh, has advanced airways, everything on it that you can do on a squad, we just can't transport.
They can, they can do Atlantic now, can't they? Are they trained to do Atlantic, the heart, for stroke?
As a basic?
No, for the squad we got now.
Yeah.
Intermediate.
Intermediate, yeah.
Yeah, I think they've got fourteen to sixteen.
It's just, it's a step in the right direction, it is.
There's just some logistics there, that's, you know, time, you know, to benefit the medic on an engine, take time for that to add. Now, I'm not saying that he's, we're out on a call, and the life squad shows up, well, then he might be able to go with paramedic. Right now, as we're certified, and, uh, our current certification.
Anybody else need mine?
We gotta move on.
Motion?
Motion, or nothing? Put them, put in the budget, or what?
I, I think it's already in the budget, isn't it?
Already in the budget.
Well, okay.
The full-time firefighter position for two thousand and fourteen's in the budget.
Okay.
But I'd so move to go ahead and make out a, uh, paramedic.
You're second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? How's that?
I mean, it's in his budget, but it's not in a past budget.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
That's, that's basically what she said, she said she...
It's in next year's budget, for fourteen.
So, but you're saying firefighter EMT.
For the record, though, this is subject to appropriation.
Right. Where'd we hear that from? What else you got, John? We, we wanna get, you got about twenty minutes.
Yeah.
The next thing that we had proposed was doing, I don't know if I want to call it a matrix, or, you know, the salary, uh, deals for volunteer part-time. When we started, eight years ago, we started putting on a part-time, we started them out at eight dollars an hour. Well, a few years ago, we, we asked to put, get it up to ten dollars an hour, but leave the eight hour, and then we can start our pay scales from eight to ten hours, but it didn't happen that way, and it went across the board. What, and what we did was, we started out ten dollars an hour, and did a pay scale for the different certifications. This is by no means, I mean, we can tweak this, however, but what we did was, we, your basic firefighter would make ten dollars an hour, and then a firefighter two, or EMT, paramedic or greater, would make fourteen dollars. But this thing can be tweaked, and this was just a proposal we put together. Right, and it, it's, it's to try to get incentive for these guys to get their certification, and also...
This is on page six there, then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That works out.
So it's something that salary ordinance, as far as the salary ordinance is gonna need?
It would be something that'd have to be done in the salary, yeah. And I wanted to bring it up to y'all, get your thoughts on it, and...
I think it's good, it'll help our fire rating out, do more training.
Well, give us something to shoot for.
Well, incentive, yeah.
The other guys got EMT, hey, maybe I'll, and then he could work like, he got the other thing, kind of, it's the same level, you'll never move up, but you get an incentive.
The lower we make that fire rating, the cheaper insurance has for people this time.
And it helps us out, too, and everybody.
Well, you're gonna get better people, too, you know?
I gotta say, so what is it, I know you don't wanna, what class of people are you getting? I mean, you getting guys that just wanna be, you know, lights and siren, and they drop off after a while? Or are you getting some real people that wanna career-wise, the, the move?
We get, there's a lot of these guys that work full-time firefighter jobs, and then, you know, of course, when you work 24 hours and you're off 48, that puts a lot of time on your hands, but they kind of, you know, get a part-time job. And, and we get some of that, you know, yeah, we do have a couple, I think, career of part-time people, uh, now, but, uh, in the most part, I think if we, if we got it up a little bit on our... Guys that are working full-time jobs, though.
Or to go get that certification, because it means a lot, if you got three EMTs on a, on a truck, and you get a bad crash, you've got guys that can just grab and help you, and it helps the squad out, and helps, versus you're by yourself, you're like, man, I'm being on another animal, I'll take care of this guy, and I can't deal with this guy, and it might be your mom, or something like that.
Works hand in hand, it does. Seen the days we could use them.
So this is something we just need to, um, to...
Amend the salary ordinance, if, if the board says, they think it's a good idea, yeah.
Question, board?
So would I have to go back in front of council also?
Yes.
Salary ordinance, well...
Yeah, I'll be asking the salary ones.
I don't know about you guys, but, I mean, if you guys want light trucks. So yearly, we have to do a salary ordinance anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
I mean, it doesn't have to be tonight, it, you know, we can wait until that timeframe comes, I mean, I, we've gone this far, and you guys agree with that?
Yeah, just give them time to digest it, take a look at it, get some in.
Oh, for 2014, so?
Yeah.
I would say January one would be a good starting point, anyway.
Well, that would be what the salary ordinance starts, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What else you got, John?
Uh, the only other thing, it's that, woo, another vehicle. I would like, I would like to, uh, ask for another staff vehicle, I know the police, police department have, talk to them, and they have one, ready to go if the board fills, fills it in, okay to do so. But what I wanna do is, uh, put Pat in a staff vehicle. Probably, two and a half years ago, we got him involved in the incident command. Really utilizing our staff vehicles for commanding control at firesongs. Early commanding control is a big deal. Helps you out of your safety, organizing the scene. It, it's really a big deal for us, and we've actually come leaps and bounds in the last couple of years, again.
Can you explain that, just give me the reader's digest version of that?
Of what?
Of the mechanics of...
Command and control, ah, just gets, uh, one...
Gets up to the scene faster, to...
Yeah, to organize the scene, basically. And I know you guys seen fires, where everybody's going crazy, running around, or car wreck, whatever. We try to, we try to get on a scene, take command, and then we start delegating assignments. Me, Rob, and Pat pulled up to the scene, say Pat got there first, he would be in command, not just because I'm the fire chief.
Yeah, but until you got there.
Then, that would lead me and Rob, probably do accountability, that's where we start. Okay, where's all our troops at, what do we got coming in from neighboring departments? And then the third guy would go to safety, and then as we have other chiefs come in from other departments, they feel, fill the command roles. Say we need to have somebody on our, our D sector, which is broke down, four sides of the building, we can put them over there. But it's that early organization of an emergency, is what it is. And we're doing quite well at it, and I, I feel that another vehicle would help us greatly in this. I know the omen is, is, ooh, it's another vehicle, cruise around. We know the rules, we got an SOG written for that, plus we have the state laws written also, all that, and they, how we use it, you know.
You'd be carrying SCBA and everything, too?
He, I tell you, I tell you what, me and Rob and Pat discussed this, and we're really thinking about starting to carry an outfit on with the AEDs. A lot of times, we, we pull, we hear there's a CPR, and we pull up there, and we don't have any.
First one there, you know, you're right out of the street.
And I really think that's, that's probably the route we're gonna go, is, is to have this equipment on there, too. Because I know me and pilot was in one day, and there was CPR, and he just got trained. Ungulate, okay, so we go out there, but, you know, we can do CPR, but we can't apply the AED. We need early defibrillation, I think. So, and that's what we're talking about for next year, it's gonna be a considerable cost. But I think it's...
On the same note, on, on the staff vehicle, I know, we try to make it, if, say, engine four gets called to Hamilton County, we like to have one of the staff chiefs go, because those guys are on Hamilton County channel, they, you're kind of like, be calling us and stuff, you got another officer on the scene, or we get called somewhere for an investigator, specialist for investigators, he's driving a personal vehicle, he doesn't have the equipment in there, put all that stuff in there. And then also, if we go, we get called like Bright or some of these other places, like you talked about, commanding control, they need a big incident, we can go up there, we have all our equipment, we can do accountability, get our own boards, we're not looking for stuff they don't have, makes our job easier, so not only do, he can respond on our assist, but when we go into other areas that's needed, we can, you know, be with our troops there and say, hey, I've got this, you guys go to work, and if any communications are, we gotta deal with the chiefs from Hamilton County, Miami County, or Ebon, or whatever, and our guys can just do their job, wherever they're overseeing our guys, too.
Having any communications, they haven't put them on everybody's radio so far, they was working on that.
The last with Hamilton County agreeing to release their frequencies and our radios, the state of Indiana will not agree with them to do that, so. We do have communication, it's, it's weird, I've been emailing...
Has been for years.
Nick, I can do the help?
We can try, but I've, I've been the top of the ladder with this, and it's, it's...
You think with all the whole insecurity, all the, you know, I mean, that's generally would be like...
Supposed to be able to communicate them together, but...
I mean, I called 911 one time up in Bright, and, and because of his 513 number, I called Hamilton County, well, I didn't need anyone to get me. I was just trying to report someone, you know, smash it to a telephone pole, you know, it's, yeah, that's crazy.
Remember the 800 system, I was supposed to take care of all this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Now they're changing, did I pick this up, or, or, there's a change coming down there.
Oh, yeah, Motorola's gonna make some more money.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Anything to cost more money.
That's who posted last, that's State Police.
And a few other people.
Do you have an extra one of these? Do you have an extra one? You sure, yeah, you can have it.
Or you can have, thank you, you can have mine.
On the car deal, too, it's, it's an office.
Right.
It's computer everything's in there.
There was time where it was just a transportation to the fire, but we've actually, we're utilizing now. Rob, I've got white boards, he's got a white board, we can organize the, uh, large scene.
Probably a motion on that, then.
Pretty efficient.
Like, I carry, I carry water, I carry everything for the guys, I show up, I'm like, you know, I got water, towels, like, stuff right there for rehab, for a little, a little bit, so we get, I can resource it, but you can't carry that in your own personal car, put kids in there, and you can't get through town, and...
And on top of that, when they go to training, they take one. Try to keep one in the city.
I need a motion on that.
And you say there's a, a unit available?
Yes, it would've been Donny's, what, Ford, it's a brand, yeah.
This be the same guidelines about the family and everything in the vehicle?
Same, like, matter of fact, you got some SOPs for that?
Yeah, we have SOPs in there, um, but, yeah, we, as far as allowing the families and stuff, so I, we can't be...
When I was chief, I wouldn't let it get in the car. Neighbors. I wouldn't.
You're just these, uh, skews, you are, no.
I think it'd be a good idea, it's up to you guys.
Well, I think if that car's available, you know, I'd rather see it be used at home than what we usually do as far as sharing some of our resources with other people, I just, and we use it here at home, I would so move.
My second.
Own favorite?
Aye.
All yes? Hey, don't spend a whole lot of money.
Oh.
I mean, they don't need chrome plated wheels, anything else.
And that is subject to appropriation.
Just, just remind me a couple months, as far as the salary ordinance, we'll make sure, yeah, we'll get it in there.
I gotta say, would it, would it be better or beneficial if we, as the board of works, gave a favorable to the council? If we're all in favor of that salary?
Money-wise, with this car, that's...
No, no, he's talking about the salary ordinance portion. I, I don't know, I mean...
I'll make a, I'll say I'll make a motion and send it on the council of favorable recommendation.
Second.
Own favorite?
Aye.
All yes?
How's that?
I'm writing this.
But the car, they can go ahead and just put that, they got that in the budget.
Motion.
Well, I appreciate everybody listening to us, Rob will be here when we need him, and I've got, I've got a keynote speech, I believe, right?
Ah, you go, boy.
Johnny, do you know what kind of plates on Donny's car? Should be a police plate, shouldn't it?
Uh, probably, I can find out.
Okay, well, just, um, do you know what year it is?
I can get that stuff for you.
Well, what I, what I'm gonna need is to know the year, so I can pull the title, so I can send paperwork to the state to get a municipal plate for it, or fire department, whatever, you know, a plate. Has that, police plate has to come off, okay?
It's been like a week.
Not a big deal, just some paperwork.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more from the board?
Sorry about the whole executive session, work session thing.
Any more, John? Any more, time for the board? Need to take a motion, I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Own favorite?
Aye.
Fifteen minutes.
Need to change that clock.
Well, I suppose you have to change.
It's not, it's not right.
What's, how far is it off?
About four, three or four minutes?
It's five minutes off.
My, mine says forty, mine says forty-three.
No, I've got, uh, 5:42.
About three minutes off.
5:42.
Oh, wow.
It's five minutes off from the bell outside.
Yeah, I know, I heard the bells, like, ooh, better get in there.
Where's maintenance when you need it?
When you need them.
I don't know.
Let me go and get my paperwork. Give them cigars here. Hey, that's, man can do, he's coming in. He's a good cigars. Hey, the, the tacks are tight, you got enough, too?
No, not as far as you, as far as...
Huh? I got a buddy, Mark Carter, he goes down there all the time, he brings me back the cigars all the time.